The Gladstone City Commissioned Reorganization Meeting is now called to order. The Delta County Board of Calisters is certified on November 5th, 2019, in general election. And the following are named as city commissioners who are currently acquiring November 1st, 2023, Bradley Mantle and Dave Phelan. I now ask that the two newly elected commissioners please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support-
That I will support-
...the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of this state-
And the Constitution of this state-
-and that I will faithfully discharge-
And I will faithfully discharge-
...the duties of city commissioner-
The duties of city commissioner-
...in and for-
In and for-
...the city of Gladstone-
The city of Gladstone-
...county of Delta-
County of Delta-
...and the state of Michigan-
And the state of Michigan-
...according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The floor is now open for nominations for the office of mayor.
I'd like to nominate Joel Thompson to continue to be the mayor for the city of Gladstone.
I'll support.
There has been a motion in support to nominate Commissioner Thompson for the office of mayor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I ask that Mayor Thompson please stand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
...that I will support-
That I will support-
...the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
...and the Constitution of this state-
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge-
And that I will faithfully discharge-
...the duties of mayor-
The duties of mayor-
...in and for-
In and for-
...the city of Gladstone-
The city of Gladstone-
...county of Delta-
County of Delta-
...and the state of Michigan-
And the state of Michigan.
...according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
The floor is now open for the nominations for the office of mayor Pro Tem.
I'd make a motion to nominate Brad Mantle, Commissioner Brad Mantle, to continue as mayor of Pro Tem.
I'll support that.
There has been a motion in support to nominate Commissioner Mantle for the office of mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I now, Mr. Mantle, please stand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
...that I will support-
That I will support-
...the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
...and the Constitution of this state-
And the Constitution of this state.
...and that I will faithfully discharge-
And that I will faithfully discharge-
...duties of mayor Pro Tem-
Duties of mayor Pro Tem.
...in and for-
In and for-
...the city of Gladstone-
The city of Gladstone-
...county of Delta-
County of Delta-
...and the state of Michigan-
And the state of Michigan.
...according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
This concludes the reorganization meeting. I would now like to uptake each of your signatures in the old book and present the gavel to Mayor Thompson.
Before I was even born?
No.
Looks older than him.
Not quite much, though.
He's definitely older than me.
So you're older than I am.
We'll call to order the Gladstone City Commission Regular Meeting of November 11th, 2019, invocation by Commissioner Hunter.
Lord have mercy. Heavenly Father, look over the commission tonight with the decisions that we're trying to make for the community, make the area better, move forward in a positive direction. Look over Commissioners Mantle and Phelan for their next four years in office, and for the guidance from Mayor Thompson, Mayor Pro Tem, Mantle, for their wisdom to help out through the commission meetings. Also, I'd like to look after and thank all the veterans that served our country, who made these meetings possible for us, especially my son Jared, who was elected to be in the National Guard for the last four and a half years. Ask these in heaven's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Hunter?
Here.
Commissioner Mantle?
Here.
Commissioner Phelan?
Here.
Commissioner Kuzinski?
Here.
Public comment?
Jay Walker, 211 South Ring Street. First, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Phelan and Commissioner Mantle on getting reelected. Nice to see that the voters like the direction that the city is moving in. I'm really happy to see that a person that I trusted in the city for $200,000 is enough there with you guys. I would also, I'd also like that you are talking with him, the city manager, to have him take over the position permanently. Eric has worked harder, hired his things for the city and has more experience than any other city manager in the operation of the city. He has righted the ship on the 93 project, which had almost been a disaster with the previous city manager. I hope you guys come up with, come up with an agreement with him soon. And lastly, I want to commend our motion from Utility Financial Solutions on the rate study for the electric refuse, water, wastewater. It was determined that our rates aren't too high, in fact, they are a little low. So if our rates go up next year, instead of blaming these five commissioners, we can thank Mike O'Connor, who wanted a rate study done because he thought they were too high, when in fact they aren't. So his lawsuit is in fact going to hit people's pockets, if possible. Thank you.
Any others for public comment? Next up, we have the consent agenda, the city commission regular meeting minutes of October 28th, parks and recreation meeting minutes of November 5th, DDA regular meeting minutes of September 17th, and the payment of bills.
Will we accept the consent agenda as presented?
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Phelan, support by Commissioner Hunter, to accept the consent agenda as published. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Under unfinished business, we have the city manager.
We met, and it was a short meeting, and I think we're all pretty close to agreement. I just haven't typed it up yet. I've been a little busy, so I was thinking it'd probably start on January 1st, so I'll have it ready for the next meeting, or I'll get it to the mayor and commissioner and have a review at first, and we'll pass it out and have it to the next or the first one in December.
Do we need a motion to table that to the next meeting, then? I'll make a motion that we table the city manager unfinished business until the next meeting?
Support that.
Yep.
So we have a motion by myself, support by Commissioner Kuzinski. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have parks and recreation policies.
These were brought to us, this is the commission, a couple weeks ago, or a couple meetings ago, and there was a few errors in it and things that needed to be changed, and it went back to the rec board, and they made the corrections.
They're asking for this to be approved tonight?
Does this also include the harbor rates?
No, but those are set annually.
Okay.
And so those, those go out separately. Those go out with our user fees.
I just wanted another explanation of that, of the different tiers, but we can wait till then, when they actually set them.
Does that happen in June, when there are other rates happen, or do you do that at a different time?
We just did it.
Okay.
And so then we'll accept the, like, three meetings ago, so. And then that, we usually wait for the waterways to come out with their rates, and then we set all of the rates. By that time, the campground is done, so we have a pretty good idea of what's going to happen there, and it's right before the ski season, so our rates are set a little bit differently than the other departments' rates.
Okay. So the rates for the harbor for next year are already set?
They're already set.
Okay. Can you just explain that? I've had a lot of people, or a few people, ask me about the rates and why they're going up.
Sure.
And I tried to explain that there's different tiers that are set by the waterways.
Yep. So we are a waterways marina harbor. We became one when we took their money, and so we are governed by their, their policies and their rules. So every year, they come up with two different rates. They come up with transient rates. And then they also come up with seasonal rates. So we chose tier, it's either seven or eight, I can't remember, but it's, it's the lesser, there's only one less expensive tier. So we chose that when we first got with the waterways, and we've stuck with that. They didn't raise their rates for the last two years, the waterways have it, so when we got our rates today, or this year, we noticed it was significant, you know, 15%. So we decided to stay with the tier we're at. If I go down a tier, or basically up a tier and make it cheaper, I'll be charging less than I did two years ago, or the last two years. So we'd like to keep the rates the same, however, we had to choose.
So the tier we're at went up a little bit?
Mm-hmm, 15%.
Yeah, the only way we could keep them, the only way we'd have anything less than that is if we went down.
If we went down.
Down a tier, which would also take us down below what we were-
What we were-
Previously charging.
For the last two years, three years. I did talk to Larry over in Escanaba, and he's typically a tier higher, but he's thinking about dropping down to our tier, so it's kind of equal. So he wants, you know, we're seven miles apart, so he doesn't want to be, he doesn't want to overprice himself, and that, that tier went up for him significantly also.
Okay.
And we're, we're kind of tied into taking those rates, like you said, right? Because we're accepting waterways' money.
Mm-hmm.
We have to abide by those rates.
And, and for the transient rates also, how many, how, there's also how many transient slips we have to have, we have to keep so many open. They've made an exception with Gladstone because we have our West End dockage, and so those are not, those, we were able to just choose. Because they're not, because they're not a-
If you schedule those, they're significantly less.
They, they're 650, but because there's so many of them, we make just as much revenue off them than we would our larger slips, our 45-foot slips. So it, it's a great, you know, revenue source for us, the West End, and they have just chose not to look at that, they're, they're just going to let us do that, and the reason being is because they're not our docks, they're the private owners' docks, and so they're not responsible for those docks. Waterways would like us to have a significant amount of money in our cash reserves, that's why we had to set up an enterprise fund for that, a standalone fund, before we took, you know, any grant money, because they want to see us continue to replace our docks. They want us to be a waterways harbor, which means that we have nice facilities, and that we're run properly, and that our docks are up to snuff, and, and so every year, we have to fill out a lot of reports for them, and one's due right now, as a matter of fact, how many people came in, how much money did we make, how much money do we have? So they, they watch pretty closely, and they want us to continue to replace docks and upgrade.
Possibly expand?
Yes, yes. And that's why they don't look at the West End, because they're not responsible for those docks, so they just kind of let that go. I will, I will say that Wednesday night at 7:00, I'm having that meeting, it's a community public meeting for everybody to come out, so I'm hoping that people will come out, because we do have a new park plan that might go into place, and we need the public's opinion on that. That's Wednesday, 7:00, at the recreation office. That'll be a real good time to talk about the marina also, because the park plan does change the park significantly, and especially the West End of the harbor. So it would be nice if everybody could come out and at least give their opinion. After Wednesday's meeting, I will put that on the website, the plan, so people can take a look at it and make some comments. It's, it's significant changes, so, and that would definitely affect, maybe even if we had a West End or not.
See some social media posts going around about that meeting?
Yep.
Are you going to push, push a few more out there in the next?
Yeah, and if, if everybody would share it, that would be wonderful, and I'm going to hit it again hard tomorrow, and it was in the newspaper. I've gotten a lot of just comments, you know, through email and texting and things, from people's suggestions, but this will be all parks, all facilities, any, any kind of suggestions you have for programming or anything can be taken at that time, but it is going to be exciting to unveil the, the park plan, to see what people think about it.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Not that I'm big on writing tickets or arresting people, but when I ask this, I know that there's some about no dogs at Bessie Park, and then also that there's the no smoking in certain areas. Is there a, is this tied into any type of action that can be taken by public safety people that want to adhere to that?
Ron Robinson had told me that it should be posted, and then they can refer to that, you know, so this, during our summer concert series, we've had a really, a significant amount of people not wanting smoking on the grassy area. Sure. So we put that in the park rules. How do I enforce that? If there's a sign that says no park, no smoking during event, then they can go up and they can say it's posted, and you, and you, you know.
I just, and I'm not opposed to that, I just want to make sure that, just being in the other world of law enforcement, a lot of times you want to make sure you have good guidance as to how it can be enforced.
Sure.
I mean, obviously you can do, become blurgardant disorderly or whatever, but you wouldn't want to get to that.
You should-
I just said, although there was something where showing there was a violation of city ordinance, it could be written a citation, or misdemeanor, or anything like that.
Yeah, it's, it's in our ordinance that we can patrol and make rules for our parks-
Yep.
And then that way, we can enforce them, so we're, we're doing these rules and policies that gives us our leverage to say, it is on paper, it is a rule, and we can enforce it. So in the ordinance, it gives us the permission to do it, and then the rules specify what we're doing.
Okay. Just making sure, I mean, just making sure some enforcement if need be.
Yep, and then, like, like the no dogs at the ball fields?
Yeah.
And that's going to be, that's going to be really hard to, I mean, people love to bring their dogs up there, so that'll be something that we'll probably have to keep reminding people, it's not, it's not acceptable anymore. In my experience, usually if you tell somebody, you know, you have to step outside to smoke, or you have to take your dog down here, usually people are really good.
Normally, they are.
They, they really are, I mean, so I haven't had any problems. And, and we're kind of, we're kind of easygoing here, you know, we don't have a huge, huge population, so we could be a little bit more lenient, but developing these rules and policies allows us to treat everybody equally, because over the years, you know, it's like, oh, let him do that, he's been doing it for years, and blah, 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 and then it's not good. So this way, at least we can treat everybody fairly.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? We're looking for a recommendation, the recommendation is we approve the campground rules, harbor rules.
I'll make a motion that we approve the-
Parks and rec policies as presented. We have a motion by Commissioner Kuzinski, support by Commissioner Phelan, to accept the, the parks and rec rules as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried.
And then just one more thing, if any of these rules need to be adjusted, because they're not, we didn't change the ordinance, we can do that annually, so if something does come up and we need to change it, you know, it's not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, cool. Next up, under new business, we have state fire insurance withholding program.
Dave, our, our new property maintenance guy's going to explain how this works, he brought it to Renee and my attention, and when I went online and looked at it, it appears that we're about the only community that's not doing it.
What this program is, it's, if somebody has a fire, what the city would do would be able to capture a certain percentage of their payout from the insurance company that we would withhold in an escrow account in order to make sure that the property is cleaned up and taken care of, and it doesn't become a, a financial burden to the city like some of them have in the past. The way it works is, there's a resolution in your package, I believe, we would need to pass a resolution, we would need to fill out a simple one-page form that we want to participate in this program. We send it down to Lansing, to the Department of Insurance, down in Lansing. They then add us to a list, and that list is sent out quarterly to all the insurance companies that do business in Michigan. And for residentials, we can capture, I shouldn't say capture, because we, we don't make anything off of this. We would, we would be able to hold in our escrow account up to 25% or an amount set by the insurance regulatory commission, that they look at Consumer Price Index, January 1st of every year. Currently, it's right about $12,700, whichever is less, 25% of the value at the time of the incident, or the $12,700. That would go into an escrow account, once the property is cleaned up, or rebuilt, or replaced, that money is then released to the insured property owner. But like the, Eric said, Gladstone's about the only place in the area that's not involved with this program.
Is there any cost to the city for this? There's no cost, it's just a-
No, it would only just be the time setting up the escrow account. I've talked with public safety, they capture, if that information is available for the insurance, who the insurance is through, and who the agent is, that information is captured at the time of the event, and then I can take it, I can contact the insurance company just to make sure that they know we are involved with the program. But no, there is no cost other than the time to set up the escrow account.
We have this over, we do this over in Escanada, I get, get to oversee the code enforcement and property maintenance section, and we do that as well, and it works, it works well. I'm not sure if we hold that among, but I know we do hold something.
Yes, it would be, you know, up to that $12,725. That's what the insurance-
Does work well. Yeah, they, the property owner tends to take care of the property much quicker, so that way they can get their last little bit of, of the payout that they're seeing coming.
You know, although it's not designed to be an enterprise fund where the city's making money, interest that's gained on that, on that money in the escrow account can be used for the administration of the account, that it can roll back into the city, which I don't think would be very much, but.
How much time does someone have to repair or demolish, or whatever, after an incident?
The, the public act says 120 days, but it also says that the city can extend that at any point in time also. As long as, as someone is making a good faith effort to move forward with cleaning up, cleaning up the site and putting it back into a usable condition, I would imagine that the city will be reasonable before it just moved in and took the property down.
What's considered reasonable condition?
Anything that's 49% or less of a value at the time of the incident, and anything that's up to code with the city, that isn't a health and safety issue for the citizens here.
I'm just curious if something like the old 4J's site, you know, what would, would that, that would be considered, that's less than 49% of what it was worth before?
Correct. But the money would have to be used to bring the property back to, to code, if it's demolished and bringing the lot back to size. And is something like the old 4J's, that's a commercial property, that's 25%, and there's no maximum cap on that, that can go up to whatever that, where the numbers fall.
And the expectation would be, either be to clear the lot or restore it?
Correct.
Is that, is that lot considered cleared, no?
I wouldn't say so, but no.
It's a concrete monument.
There's still a basement there.
I'm sure there was no, nothing captured there.
It's a hazard, actually.
No.
You chase kids off there at Halloween.
The city doesn't have that tall, these tall, don't they?
I don't think the city owns it.
This being a, a resolution, is there, what are the steps in, are there going to be a public hearing on this? So would we approve the resolution tonight, or are we just going to approve the enrollment process? The resolution's only like three paragraphs, saying basically what's in this.
If you, if you did approve the resolution tonight, there is a, there is a waiting period before we can get on this program, and we'd love to get it in place before the, the winter season hits. We tend to see a few more fires in the wintertime, so.
Is there, is 120 days, that's, you had mentioned, that's, the city can change that, right, depending on the, what, what activities going on on the property, what actions the property ever is taking?
That's correct, sorry.
Because I know 120 days, sometimes just resolving with your insurance company can take longer than that.
Right.
So as long as there's some good faith moving forward, I don't want to-
The 120 days starts-
Make sure we have some leeway to adjust that.
Yes, it starts from the time that the city would have the money escrowed into the account, then 120 days starts.
So it'd be by the time the insurance company makes the payout?
Correct.
Okay, so it might, it might be six months before the 120 days even starts to go.
That's right.
Okay, I got, okay, so it's from the time the money is received in the account, not the day of the incident?
Not the day of the incident.
Okay, all right.
The only time I can see that 120 days being extended is possibly because of seasonal conditions, weather conditions.
Right, they can't get the work happening in the wintertime, you're not going to be able to-
They can't get things planted, right.
Start clearing anything, doing any work until spring.
Exactly.
Correct. Will we approve the enrollment in the state fire insurance withholding program?
I'll support.
The motion by Commissioner Phelan, support by Commissioner Hunter to, to approve the resolution?
If you could note, yeah, the 2019-16 state fire insurance withholding program resolution as well.
You want to add that, too?
Yes.
You still support that?
Me? Oh, yeah, I'll still support that.
Oh, wait a minute.
Any, any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Thanks, Dave. Next up, we have captured values and analysis of the Gladstone DDA.
Okay, this is a report that everybody has been waiting for, and what I did is I, I read through the entire report again for a third time, and it's, it's quite confusing the way it's worded, it sort of goes in circles, and so I, I- It sort of goes in circles and so I, I just, I took the conclusion and I sort of abbreviated the conclusion. In the conclusion, there was two items that the court asked us to address. Item number one, the 47th Circuit Court ordered an analysis of past activities. What are the captured assessed values for the DDA for fiscal years ending in 2009 through 2018 using the definition of captured assessed values found in the Recodeified Tax Increment Financing Act? What Mr. Turner found, that there was an error in one initial assessed value used in the tax capture formula during the time period inspected. Instead of using the 1992 plan value of 7.6 million, administrators used an initial assessed value of 7.2 million. The difference of 452,000 resulted in excess captured taxes. However, as the information which follows demonstrates, values used to capture taxes were reasonably close to what would have been expected. Given the magnitudes of all properties, the annual excess captured value, as noted in Table 13, was under 5%. So each of the years, the captured value was plus or minus 5%. Mr. Turner goes on to say, "It is my belief and understanding that the ordinances were not adopted in an appropriate way and there was no expansion in 2009." So legal guidance from the city's attorney was requested and a response received. The relevant guidance is, because the DDA has been capturing tax increment revenues under the 2009 Plan Amendment for a full 10 years, it is unlikely any court would now nullify the 2009 amendments. Supporting that opinion and to the city's credit, all advertising and publications related to the proposed expansion demonstrated an intent to transparently inform all parties of an expansion and specifically where new tax capture activities would be undertaken. In his response to the court, the first question, based upon the attorney's guidance, it was concluded that for the years 2009 through 2018 inclusive, the amount of captured assessed value computed by the city was reasonable. And number two, that the geographic areas used and the value of properties lying within, within them are reasonable for the years 2009 through 2018 inclusive. Okay, now, court directive number two, the 47th Circuit Court ordered a response to the question, should the DDA revise how it calculates and/or establishes captured assessed value on a going-forward basis? General response, transition from past practices. Says, "Changes are necessary, but all in all, it appears that the city leaders over the past quarter century have planned diligently to improve their communities with taxes that have been captured. Outside of the litigation for which this report has been ordered, I have not become aware of any widespread dissent within the community. The city consistently made public its actions and there is no suggestion of attempting to hide anything. My overall impression of the administration of the Gladstone DDA is that it has been well thought out. As this report may demonstrate, the establishment and administering of tax captured authorities can be very complex and involves many individuals and taxation principles that are not well-known even to professionals in the area of property taxation." Number two, he had the two, the two questions and then he broke down the second question into, into six or seven parts. Part two, the formation irregularity issue revolved by a formal legal opinion. And his recommendation is barring a court order, rely upon the attorney's formal opinion. The formal opinion was that the boundaries were done. Item number three, clearly identify each development and project area. His recommendation for that is, going forward, there must be two distinct calculations of an annual captured assessed value. 7.65 million must be used as the initial assessed value for calculations of the captured assessed value of properties lying within the 1992 boundaries. And two, 8.6 million must be used as the initial assessed value to calculate the annual captured assessed values for properties lying within the geographic area created by the 2009 proposed expansion. Item number four, permanent unchanging reference, reference record. Recommendation, to identify and correct errors caused by using negative values rather than taking a property value to zero and to verify the actual properties to be used in tax capturing activities, a calibration of the 2019 values is recommended. The calibration may be accomplished by establishing a permanent body of appropriate records identifying each taxable property lying within each project or development area for the year 2019. Going forward, existing property rule numbers should not be removed if their value is removed, but instead the value should be recorded as zero. New properties and their value should be added in the year they first appear. The city should not rely upon their existing software for the process unless it can be demonstrated that past irregularities have been corrected and contemporary values being generated are accurate. We use the BSNA software, which is designed for DDAs in figuring this, and the negative values were part of their program, so that's why there were some negative values for properties that were torn down or removed by other means. Item number five, reasonableness of values used to calculate captured value, 2009 to 2018. If the value change between 1992 and 2018, within the 1992 district boundaries due to inflation and improvements could have been available, I expected that the estimated values shown would have actually been closer to those used by the treasurer. So he's saying we're actually closer than the plus or minus 5%. Recommendation, accept values used for the years 2009 through 2018 inclusive unless the legal authority should rule otherwise. Item number six, time of adoption of the ordinance for 2009 expansion. Recommendation, based upon the attorney's opinion, the recommendation is to accept the initial assessed value of 8.6 million for 2009 and 7.65 million for 1993. If a legal interpretation is that the ordinance 578 approved in April 2009 did expand development area boundaries, then there would have been no expansion and the appropriate initial assessed value would continue to be the 1992 value of 7.65 million. He has other conclusions and recommendations. There's two or three of them that were corrected by the attorney. Just gets, when you get down to the bottom of the page, he said, "Because the author is not an attorney nor competent to make legal decisions, it is recommended that judicial guidance be sought for any matter that raises a question of law discovered in this document." And he also liked to make recognition of city staff. The author was grateful for the assistant of the Gladstone City Assessor, Janice Ketchum, City Clerk, Kim Berry, and City Treasurer, Vicky Schroder. All were quite helpful, but particular note should be made of the efforts put forth by Assessor Ketchum and Treasurer Schroder. Tasks for this report had to be completed during a time period when any assessor or treasurer is under great pressure to complete certain statutory required tasks. Both Ketchum and Schroder clearly spent a considerable amount of time verifying old records, locating taxable properties on maps and retrieving values from over a 10-year period constituted thousands of individual property tax records. So that is the summary of the Turner report.
So we spent $9,000 plus many hours of labor within the city and attorney fees to find out that we're running our DDA exactly as we should?
Yep, this is a boil sound, too.
Again, this was part of the settlement.
Yep.
Because of the lawsuit.
If you look at the, if you look at the rate study, and this study together came out to about $75,000 along with the attorney fees, it just did a little estimate on, on the labor that was wasted between the people working for the city and figure we have between $400 and $500,000 invested in this waste of time.
And the entire loss?
Yep.
Of $500,000.
$500,000 come to the conclusion that we're doing everything perfect.
Not, not, not perfect, but...
Nothing...
Within the law.
Well, within the law.
So taxpayers spent all the money, right?
That came out of, some of it came out of the DDA.
Well, it's still taxpayer money.
Taxpayers' money. And most of it came out of the general fund.
So could taxpayers, if taxpayers filed a class action lawsuit against Mr. O'Connor or his incorporated business to recoup some of the tax money that...
I like where it's at.
I'm just putting it out there.
See, Mr. Bacon doesn't want to comment on it.
It was just a question.
You know, we sit up here, we talk, we kind of wring our hands over a couple thousand dollars here and there and now we're talking about a deep, deep six-figure, half-million-dollar bill that was unnecessary that we've all been saying from the beginning.
And maybe some of that money that was spent unnecessarily because of Mr. O'Connor could have gone to our Ninth Street project to offset some of the costs.
Some of the assessments.
Well, it could have most definitely been used for better purposes.
Yep, not to mention all the stress it caused, caused on people that were involved in this whole process.
And I guess when people see Mr. O'Connor, they should thank him for wasting the money.
And, you know, I'd like to thank the, you know, all the members of the DDA are volunteers, you know? It's been pretty stressful for them and really like to thank them for their diligence to stick with it. You know, I mean, they could all walk away too.
Absolutely.
If I could comment, that the, the rate study and this report is available on, online on our website with the commission meeting packets, the special meeting for the rate study and this report in its entirety, you know, under this meeting agenda, so they're very public.
Hats off to the staff to help and also have to put up with all the tedious requests of documentations and so on and needing to put this report together. So, good work.
So to move this forward, we just need a recommendation that we're going to analyze and certify the annual tax captures and move on? Do we need a motion for that? I mean, this is just more of a presentation of what the findings were?
Right.
So I can move on to something?
In the form of a motion, you, you certainly can, but it's not required here?
We can move on to something more cheerful like Old Fashioned Christmas.
Yes, yes.
Yes, there's a request for closure of North 11th Street and Delta Avenue from 11th Street to 8th Street. Is there anything you need to add, Ron, to this that's the same as last year?
Same as last year. Ninth Street, of course, will not, their traffic will still flow on Ninth Street, so that will not be, other than that, it's the same request as last year.
Are they going to be horse-drawn wagons this year or are they tractor-pulled?
No, as a matter of fact, remember Derby Chase and I worked with the Delta County Chamber and they have two wagons because that was a pinch point for us last year because with the one wagon, it was slow, so we wanted to see if we could expand it, so we were able to get from them a couple of wagons. They will not be horse-drawn, they will be tractor-drawn and Derby will be picking them up. They're going to park in the back of my place prior to the event and then stage in there. So that will be better. Another thing that last year we were told was that the streets seemed to be somewhat dark and so Shelley, our coordinator, has invested in some LED solar type lights which are going to be on some of the trees along the street, so we're trying to do things to brighten it up. And finally, there are some, some new businesses who are going to participate. For example, I was just over, I met Commissioner Hunter at the new GM just earlier today and they're going to be doing some things there. And once again, at the Delta Deli, they're going to be having, last year they had Mrs. Claus. This year, what they're going to do is they're actually going to have cookie, you know, decorator cookies for the kids. So everybody's doing something a little bit different, so we are really hopeful that it's even going to be better than it was last year. And I think last year, anybody who was there would say it was quite an event.
You go ahead, I'll support it.
I'll make the motion that we approve the street closure of North 11th Street and Delta Avenue from 11th to 8th Street for the Old Fashioned Christmas on November 9th from 4:00 PM till 8:30 PM.
29th?
29th.
I'll support that one, though.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kozinski, support by Commissioner Hunter to approve the street closures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have wastewater.
We need to set a special meeting date. Either yet this month or the first week of December would work out. I talked to the, the project engineer. Rodney and I met with C2AE on Election Day and we discussed the SAW grant, the INI study, which is infiltration and inflow, figuring the bad parts of our system where we might be taking groundwater in. And the SRF project plan, which was part of the SAW grant. C2AE and wastewater personnel, myself, would like to sit down with the commissioners and they'll go over the plan and we'll discuss if we want to submit a notice of intent to EGO or EQ, whatever you want to call them, and so if we can set a date, that everybody would be available.
First week of December was best for me. I had deer season coming up. I don't plan on being around if I don't have to.
Can we do it? Sometimes, sometimes we've done it in conjunction before a meeting. Is that enough time?
We don't have one in the first week.
It might be, it might be an hour and a half or so.
25th?
So...
Like December 2nd, maybe?
I like Monday the 2nd. That works for me.
Is that something that'll work, Eric?
Yep, he, that was one of his days. He was, he said he was available or make sure he's available. He said every evening except Friday evening. Friday evening.
At like, 5:00 o'clock?
He'll be out of town that week.
On the 2nd?
Yeah, first half of that week, he'll be down Detroit.
When will you be back that week?
I'll be back the 4th.
I don't have probably Thursday either.
Thursday, even, even Wednesday, if you want to do it Wednesday evening. I'll be back in, I'll be back in time for that.
Wednesday? Thursday work for everybody?
Thursday's best for me.
Eric?
Thursday's good for me.
Thursday to 5th?
Yep. So far.
I'll tell you, I will let them down.
At 5?
Thursday the 5th.
Too early, too late?
Five, five's good.
Thursday the 5th at 5:00 o'clock?
I'd make a motion, it's a special meeting for the wastewater treatment, to stay revolving the one from discussion for December 5th at 5:00 p.m.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Mantle, support by Commissioner Phelan to set the meeting for 5th of December. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have the city manager's report.
Oh, in regards to what you just approved, I'll, we'll get the information, I'll queue probably a couple weeks ahead of time, some of it, some of it they might bring there, but we'll get you the information. INI study, is that online or?
I don't think it's online, I just got it hard-gunned.
Okay. Yeah, get that out. Okay, city manager's report, we worked with NMU to finish off their part of the monopole agreement. They had their antennas installed, and they are putting their, their two-foot dish at 144 feet, as per the agreement, and so it's all been stress-tested and everything, so the pole is, as soon as they put that on. He did bring up the fact that Eskenaba is using that NMU for communications, and they really like it, so he's going to come by and show us what Eskenaba has and see if we might want to do some things that could save us some money, like communications with lift stations and pump stations, and if public safety can use it, and any of that stuff, so... Spent a lot of time, we worked with the different department heads, with UFS, we were on conference calls going over the budget regarding the rate study, which we had last week. Spent November 5th as an election worker. Took one hour off to meet with C2AE regarding the SAW and wastewater treatment upgrades. Brett and Amy and I went through the WPPI budget for the money we usually give away and the community relations budget. We wrote a check out, and we'll be presenting these checks for $1,000 to the Brave Bots and $500 to the volunteer fire department for their fundraiser golf outing. And the energy efficient fund, $3,000 check was sent out to Mr. Jeff Dieboldt Sr., for he has a big solar project on his house, beginning credit for from WPPI, so...
Let's make it forward.
Yep. See, Vicki, Ron Robinson and I met, and we went through the public safety budget. I think all of us understand it a little better now. Utility committee met regarding fees and utility policies and annual rate sheet, and we're trying to clean everything up, so the numbers will be on one document and the policies will be another document, and so we'll be getting that to the commission a little later in the year, or next year. Kim and I met with St. Francis, our new building in town here, and discussed their occupational medical program, which they have. They also do random drug testing, which we have had to contract out, and we've gone through two or three different contractors in the last few years, so we're looking to see if we can stay right, right home and get all that taken care of for a good price. Got word that TJ Thomas has resigned, I think tomorrow is his last day as the Delta County EDA. He was at the last meeting, given a presentation, or he got a offer he could have refused for a job in the private sector. New office clerk Rhonda Burnson will have her first day of work, will be Thanksgiving week, the November 25th, and we're looking real forward to Rhonda starting. And just to let everybody know, the EPA contractor is in town cleaning up the Del Fab property. This cleanup is not what Del Fab caused, but it was contaminated by Sargent's recycling, and there's a lot of lead in the ground from smashing of the, I think, the screens and stuff like that, and so it was determined a cleanup site, and so they are cleaning it up. They are monitoring the conditions 24 hours a day while they're there, so there's, there's no danger to the public.
Whose, whose cost does that hurt?
The federal government is cleaning it up.
They're footing the bill for it?
No. And that's all that I have.
Thanks, sir. City Commissioner Committee reports, Boarder Commission reports? City Commissioner comments, Commissioner Hunter?
Just a couple. One, Ron already mentioned this, but there is the, the new business, new gym in town. Bob Norris is the, is the owner, he is, his business name, or the gym's name is Accelerate. He's, he does have, for the rest of this month, it's kind of a, I'll call it an ad hoc type of membership, so people can come in and, and look the gym over, utilize it. I think he's looking at maybe the first week of December, after you had left, Ron, we were, we were talking, he's looking maybe the first week of December, having a grand opening and having the Delta County investors there. But it's a really nice facility. Jeff Dieboldt did, did all the, all the remodeling. If you haven't got a chance to go and take a look, it's, Bob's there quite a bit, usually from about 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning to about 1:00 at, at night or in the morning, sort of putting some final touches on, but it's, it's a really nice addition to Gladstone. So everybody likes to work out or try to get fit after the holidays and get those extra cookies from the Old Fashioned Christmas, might be worth a chance to look into. That's the old Swanson's Hartland, Crossman Legion.
The old by Delta.
That's, there you go. The old by Delta, so... The other thing is too, in my other, in my paying job with Eskenaba Public Safety, I oversee the Delta County Dispatch Center, and one of the things that we're trying to promote a little bit more is Smart 911. What that does, allows for people to build a, it's a free app that you can download, you can build your profile, you can add to it whatever you want, it's not viewable unless you actually dial and call in 911. So like myself, my profile, I made up with my, I'm an allergy, medical allergy, I have my family, I have where my house is at, obviously, but not only that, but what type of heat I have, electricity I have, so on, so forth. You can build your profile any way you want, it will, it will come in handy, I experimented with it today to see exactly what comes up, and what the nice thing is, if for some reason you have to dial 911 from your cell phone, you're not able to talk for whatever known reason, your profile is there, you have emergency contacts, the emergency contacts will have people's phone numbers already in place, it will have your address, if you have a, say you have a keypad, you can have, if you want, you can put your code in there, and in that way we can let, let the officers or the medical staffers, responders know what that code is to get in. So if you get a chance, you can email myself over at Eskenaba Public Safety, we can get the information off the pamphlets out, there's a big push. Jenny Peterson, who is assistant with me, is really doing a lot of presentations on this, so if you get a chance, just pull it up, Smart 911, and we're one of the, one of the first dispatch centers that's really trying to, to push us and get this, get this technology going for our area.
You can't talk?
Pardon me?
You can't talk?
You can talk, but...
Press 911?
Yeah, if you dial 911, hit enter, and for some reason you're not able to talk, your profile, everything, you put an emergency contact...
Couldn't talk at all?
Nope, 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 not at all. No, you can talk on it, but it really comes into play as if for some reason you can't talk. But anyway, your, your profiles, anything you want to build on it is what would be visible by the operator. Other than that, that's, just watch out for the weather, supposed to begin some snow around this surrounding area, so be careful. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to congratulate Joe and Dave and Brad on their reelection and for the work with you guys, and nice company to have next door.
He's waiting.
Yeah.
He don't know what's going on.
That's why he's very little.
Yep, and I'd also like to, again, we'd met, we'd talked about the DDA, and I'd like to thank the DDA for their diligence and persistence, dealing with everything they have here in over the past, it's been two years, and would also, you know, you look at downtown and what it looked like four years ago, and you look, look at downtown on a daily basis, and it, it's nice to see how busy it is, how much business has come in, and they've done some great things for the city, and I appreciate it, and I'd like to point that out, that, so that everybody else can appreciate it as well. That's it.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking the voters for putting their confidence in myself and congratulate Commissioner Phelan also. I'm humbling, and I look forward to another four years of working with this, the commission here and with the staff, which is, which is a great group to work with. I wouldn't have stepped forward again to serve in such a capacity if I didn't feel so. But also I'd like to, what Commissioner Hunter started out, our invocation with thanking our veterans, I'd like to thank those veterans who have served on this Veterans' Day, who are the ones that are really, you know, that allow us to be like this, to discuss like this, and to live in such a wonderful place and enjoy such freedom, so all my thanks, I know it's, sounds cliche, but all my thanks to them, and I hope we keep all of them in our thoughts and prayers on this Veterans' Day. That's all.
I'd like to thank the voters too for coming out, it was a good turnout. As Kim said, it was a really good turnout for just a general election, so...
I don't have the exact number yet, I know somebody, but I just haven't had a chance.
Congratulations to Brad and Joe for getting the nominations for Mayor and Commission again. Look forward to working with this commission, I think we've got a good thing going here. I think we've, especially in the last year, I would say this commission has made a lot of steps forward, doing a lot for the city, working a lot closer with the DDA. I think, I think we're on the right track, and I hope it continues to go that way. Another thing I'd like to bring up is the Old Fashioned Christmas. Last year was the first time I ever attended one. Generally, I'm not in town, I'm a deer hunter, and I don't come in for stuff like that, but my daughter made me, she was four years old at the time. And I did go, and I'll tell you what, that was, that was super enjoyable, it's really nice to see the expression on all the kids' faces, and there's just a lot going on, and if you've never attended one, I highly recommend it. And I'd also like to thank all the veterans on this Veterans' Day, like Brad said, it's because of them that we can do things like this. That's all I have.
I'd like to thank everybody on the commission for stepping forward and being on the commission. I think we're bringing good stability to Gladstone and moving things in the right direction. I'd like to thank all the veterans out there, and like to remember all the veterans that didn't make it back, you know, protecting our freedoms so that we could be on this commission. Really appreciate, you know, the fact that people put themselves out like they, like they do. That's all the comments I've got. City Clerk comments?
Again, congratulations to the commission, excited to continue what we have now. It was a great, it was a really good turnout, I don't have the exact number turnout with it for a regular general city commission election, so thank you to the voters for participating. I will have that report and I'll email it to you guys and I'll get the numbers, I just haven't had a chance, I'm playing some catch-up. And thank you to my workers too, they did a really great job as usual, the equipment went, went well, everything went really well, so look forward to next year's Bay election year, so, so that was good, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Kim. Next up, we have a closed session for a written, for an attorney opinion, not a written attorney opinion, actual attorney event opinion.
I make a motion entering a closed session to consider material exempt from discussion as disclosed by state or state statute. I'll have under open means, actuary security, so I can say it's sex. Your support?
We have a motion by Commissioner Mantle, support by Commissioner Phelan to go into closed session, roll call?
Commissioner Mantle?
Yes.
Commissioner Phelan?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes. Closed session.
You're going next door?
Just so it's in the minutes, one no.